Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the January 8th, 2024 Tuolaton City Council Work Session. Happy anniversary, everyone. Our first item on the agenda is led by Nicole Morris on a discussion of the City Advisory Committee presentation and possible changes. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. So I am Deputy City Recorder Nicole Morris, and I'm here today to talk to you about the city advisory committees. So we'll be talking today about what is an advisory committee in relation to local government. We'll review our current city committees, and then we'll take a look at our Council Committee on Advisory Process, which is made up of three city councilors, and then we'll open the floor to discussion and questions. So why have advisory committees? So first off, boards, commissions, and committees are synonymous terms just used to describe governing bodies with limited authority that serve primarily in an advisory capacity to the city council. So they're important to have for two reasons. Some are required by law, like the Budget Committee and the Planning Commission, and then others are at the discretion of the council. They play an important role in city governance by assisting the governing bodies yourselves in addressing specific issues in detail, lending professional expertise, and facilitating community decision-making and discussions. There are some basic legal requirements for all of our committees, and it's that they must meet Oregon Public Meeting Law. They have to meet the Oregon Public Records Law, so we have to keep records in accordance with that. And then all the officials must abide by the Oregon Ethics Law. So here at the city of Tuolaton, we have seven active permanent committees. They're all outlined in Tuolaton Municipal Code, Chapter 11. Each section of the code covers things like terms of office and membership, organization of the committees, meetings, quorums, rules and regulations, removals and vacancies, powers and duties, expenditures of funds if they have them, and annual reporting. There are some inconsistencies in the code between the boards and committees with items related to the formal council liaison positions, student members, occupation requirements, and geographical balance. So now we're going to talk about all of the committees here at the city to kind of give everybody a high-level view of what they are and how they serve you. The first committee is the Tuolaton Planning Commission, abbreviated as the TPC. Their purpose is to recommend and make suggestions to the council regarding plans for growth, development, and beautification of areas, recommend and make suggestions regarding the preparation revision of community development-related ordinances, so those related to the Development Code, study and propose measures that may be advisable or in the public interest related to safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare of the city within the urban growth boundary, and then to serve the City of Tuolaton Commission for Citizen Involvement in accordance with the State of Oregon Land Use Conservation and Development Goal Number One. The staff liaison for this committee is Assistant Community Development Director Steve Coper, who you've seen many times. This committee has seven members serving a three-year term. No more than three members can have the same occupation. No more than two members can be engaged in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate, and no fewer than five must reside inside the city with no more than two residing outside the city. The next committee is the Parks Advisory Committee, also known as T-Park. Their purpose is to recommend and make suggestions to the council regarding all matters related to public parks and playground-related activities and programs, and they help to formulate the comprehensive plan for the community parks. The staff liaison for this committee is Parks Planning Manager Rich Mueller. So this committee has seven members, and they serve three-year terms. Some things to note for the makeup of the committee is that they strive for geographical balance with no fewer members residing inside the city and no more than two residing outside, and this committee can have one member less than 18 years old who serves a one-year term. The next committee is the Core Area Parking District. Their purpose is they're responsible for the operation of the district. They prepare and submit the city budget committee a proposed budget for the fiscal year and set the tax and recommend the setting of the tax rate, and they serve in an advisory capacity to the council on policy matters affecting the district. The staff liaison is Assistant City Manager Dawn Hudson. This committee has seven members with three-year terms, no fewer with five, owning, operate, and occupying business in the district. There is one council member and can have one ex officio member, less than 18 years old, who serves a one-year term. The next committee is the Library Advisory Committee, also known as TLAC. The purpose is to consult and advise the library manager on all matters affecting operational policies of the city library and make recommendations to the city council with respect to services and matters related to the facility, and they hear and consider complaints about city library policies or materials. The staff liaison is Library Director Jerian Thompson. This committee consists of seven members serving three-year terms. They strive for geographical balance with no fewer residing than five residing in the city and no more than two residing outside the city, and they can have one member less than 18 years old serving a one-year term. The Arts Advisory Committee, their purpose is to encourage greater opportunities of recognition of arts in Tuolaton. The staff liaison is Recreation Manager Julie Ludeman, and they consist of seven members serving three-year terms. Two members shall have arts professional backgrounds, no fewer than five residing in the city, and no more than two outside. This committee can have a student position.
Doesn't have a... Does the city council or...
Not by code.
Not by code?
No.
Huh, okay, thank you.
I was. The Architectural Review Board, or the ARB. This one, the primary powers and duty of the board are to review the Development Code proposals that are subject to the architectural review process of the Tuolaton Development Code, Development Code stuff. The staff liaison is Assistant Community Development Director Steve Coper. This, the makeup of this committee is a little more complex. So there's seven members, they all serve two-year terms. So one member of the city council, one registered professional architect and an alternate, one registered professional landscape architect and an alternate, one registered professional engineer or registered engineer in training and an alternate, three lay members of which two must reside in the city, and they can have one ex officio member, less than 18 years old. And our newest committee, the Inclusion Diversity Equity Access Advisory Committee, or the IDEA Committee, they were created to act in an advisory capacity about how the city may build and strengthen relationships with the community as well as lower barriers to public participation in city government. The staff liaisons are Library Director Jerian Thompson and Community Engagement Coordinator Betsy Rodriguez Roof. This committee is a little unique in that it consists of nine to 13 members serving three-year terms, no more than two residing outside the city. They can have one member less than 18 years old who serves a one-year term. They have one city council member serving as an ex officio member. And then they seek to appoint members from a diversity of backgrounds, including cultural diversity and experiences, and then it goes further into talking about different population or groups in our community. Okay, does everyone understand the pieces of the puzzle for all of the committees? It's all in writing, so you can reference it back. So the next advisory committee we have is one made up of councilors. So it's the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments, or the CCAA. This committee is outlined in the City Council Rule 7, Section E, and the purpose is to screen and recommend community members to be appointed to all of the city committees we just talked about. So the current members are Council President Valerie Pratt, Councilor Maria Reyes, and Councilor Kristin Sacco. So committee members are appointed by the mayor every two years, and this committee meets the first Monday of the month as needed based on term dates and vacancies of the other city committees. The process for this committee is also outlined in the council rules. And so this is the verbatim process outlined here on the slide. Basically, they interview all the candidates for appointment, and then those come to the council, which you guys have reviewed before, and you guys can make recommendations outside of that, and then it is adopted at the council meeting, and they have to be made by a majority vote of the council. So at these meetings, when the candidates are interviewed, there are 10-minute appointments held via Zoom, and we ask two sets of questions for either new applicants or reappointments to the committees. So all applicants, whether they are current members seated on the committee or not, have to be reappointed each term. If we don't have vacancies, or if we don't have lots of applications for the committee or none at all, members can continue to serve until reappointed. So just because their term is up, they can continue to serve until a new appointment has been made, or we can get them to the, one of the CCAA meetings to be reappointed. So you can see here some of the questions that are asked at the meeting. Ask about people's interests in the committee, their other community involvement, what do they want from the city, and what do they like most about the city. We are, the committee members ask about equity and access on committees. So with that, with the goal of having robust advisory committees, we wanted to come to you today and see if there's any changes that you'd like to see. And I put some prompts up on the screen. Are there any changes to the committees the council would like to consider? And are there any process improvements the council would like to consider for the CCAA? So I turn the floor over to you.
So the floor is open, and I guess the members of the committee can speak first since you're the ones doing this every day. Give you guys, give you guys first dibs.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it. I'm trying to go in order here, but so I think I have, I have two things on the committees themselves. Do you know what the history is, why we have? I get the Planning Commission, we don't have anybody, but why do we have councilors like on the Arts Committee and not the Parks Committee or the Library Committee, for example? Like, we only have three committees, other than planning, we only have two committees where there's not councilors, but the other ones have them, so.
Right. I think it's just, I don't know the full history.
The mayor may know that as well. And as you saw in code, the municipal code does not include the Art Committee, and yet the Art Committee many years ago asked for a council liaison, but I think that was never instituted in code. The, so budget is required by law. The Architectural Review Board is interesting in that, and I was talking to the city attorney a while ago, and he can speak for himself clearly, but the, he has never seen the situation where there's a counselor on a board that the decision could be appealed to the city council. So that's kind of, I don't know the history of why there's a counselor on ARB, but it is a little interesting and odd.
Yeah.
And then, library, I don't think there's ever been a desire or a need or like, it's advisory to the library director, and so I think there's a little bit of a, maybe a thing about it's administrative more than it's to the council.
Well, like in my mind, and this might just be my opinion, I really think it's great, and I'm going to pull on Counselor Brooks, but I think it's great that she comes and tells us what the Arts Committee is doing. I mean, they come once a year and tell us, but I think it'd be great to have someone on Parks and Library just in an ex officio role, so they're not voting, you know, they're not making decisions that are coming to council because that seems slightly redundant. But just the fact that they'd be kind of informing us throughout the year what's going on and keeping in touch with that group and, you know, more in touch things. So when we have like our council advance or something, they could be more informed about what that group's really thinking. That's just my suggestion. And then I'm wondering on the core area, since we have such a problem getting people on that one in particular, like if we should be looking at the requirement that five of them have to operate and own their businesses, maybe we could include like managers? Like if there's a bank or something, why could...
Yeah, so you just have to work there. You don't have to own.
Oh, you don't have to be an owner.
You just have to be part of it.
Okay, I just misunderstood that because it seems like that would really limit it.
Yeah, so we...
You better currently on it.
Yeah, so Jackie Conan, our volunteer services person, she has gone out and reached out directly to businesses, and we have had employees of some of the businesses serve on the committees.
Yeah, I'm thinking like banks and other businesses.
Yeah.
And then my last one is on the actual CCA, well, CCAA, we wanted to rename that for a long time, but we haven't come up with a name, so it'd be nice to look at that. And then the one thing on the reappointment question is the second question, I like the idea of that question, but the way it's worded is really hard to say, and I think, I think like at least a third of the time, we get asked, what did you say? What did, you know, we get asked to restate that question, so I think that just needs some work on how it's phrased. That's it, thanks.
Yeah, I also, I serve on the appointing people to this, to these committees, and I also struggle with that question as well, so I concur with what Counselor President Pratt is, President Counselor Pratt is saying. I, I do want to say a little bit on the core committee, I serve on that committee as the council liaison, and I feel that the part that it says, even if you work, like be more clear in the description of people that, because I know that, and I actually brought it up to Rotary, and I'm speaking more about it, but I think if we add, if you, if you're an employee or work for, I think that would be a little bit more, or live in the core area, would be more clear in the, in the kind of people we want them to serve, we want to serve on the committee, because it does make it seem like only owners of properties and owners of businesses can, can operate there. And I think if we be more clear, that would attract more of the, more individuals to that, to that committee. The, I, those were, I know about the core area, but yeah, there are the questions, the purpose of the first question, that says, have you, do you, do you serve in any other council committee meeting? That one, it's always like a no, or is there any other way we can rework that and make it more, that people can elaborate?
So the councilors, so the history with the questions is, is those have actually changed a couple times since I've been the staff person on the committee. Those are set by the committee members, so those can be updated, modified, or changed at any time. So it used to be just one set of questions, and then it became two because they wanted to ask people who were reappointed something different. So those questions are at the purview of the members of the committee.
And do members know when they're being, coming to interview that this is a reappointment, which means sometimes we would consider moving someone that hasn't been especially other, like other individuals because they are new? I mean, do they, they get to understand that it's not a continuation as like, I feel like sometimes they, it's, it's just they're, they're expecting a yes.
Yeah, so we received that feedback recently through some conversations with some committee members, and we're having conversations with staff members who communicate those reappointments, and so we're adding some clarity around that for members.
I think those were the big ones that I remember as serving in this committee.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had some comments around the, the, the committee members who are being reappointed to just understand the whole process. I think there's been a couple recently that, and I don't, you know, me going through the process, I, when I was on T-Park, I ask a lot of questions, but I don't know what, you know, how many questions others are asking, but just making sure that they understand where to get the information, when their term's up, how long their term is, all of that, and I know all those things are given to them, but I don't know if there's like a sit-down process that we could do with them that's more formal, so they really understand. And then also, if they are, if, I think it's helpful to know if they are going up for either reappointment or a first-time committee member to know, you know, this is something that you have to prepare for, and you will be asked this set of questions, and because I feel like some people are much more prepared or maybe being reappointed, they kind of think that they're just going to be reappointed instead of knowing that, hey, there's three other people that are, there's one position, there's three people, this is a competitive situation, and I think people might prepare differently for those situations. And I, I know sometimes we get feedback from the staff person, and so I think that's always really helpful to, are they participating, are they not participating? That, that's helpful in making those decisions. Sometimes you don't get that from the interview. And then, goodness, there was one other thing I was going to say, and I lost it. I'll see if it comes back to me. Thank you.
I think Counselor Pratt wanted to go, then you can go again.
It's a follow-up.
Mine's a follow-up on Counselor Reyes, where it says, do you serve on any, like, I forgot how it's worded. No, it's like, do you serve on any other committees or...
The first question.
Yeah, it's, it's really odd, and people don't know the answer, and I think it could be just changed to say, have you done other volunteer things in Tuolaton, really vague? Because some people have done a lot, it's just not on an official city committee, and it'd be just good to hear what they've done in the community, like, maybe they were on Tuolaton together, well, that's not a city committee, but it'd be a lot that they've done in the community.
Yeah.
So I think there's a simple fix for that one.
It comes very upfront as no.
Yeah.
And then you're like, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes a very upfront no, and you're like, or yes, and then you're like, okay, which one? Or, and then, so it, it kind of makes it seem like there's just that yes or no answer, and we would like for them to elaborate a little bit. The follow-up, one of the, oh geez, one of the things that I also, we hear a lot, the questions at the end, we always ask, you have any questions for us? It's what's going to happen after this, and I really do hope that we follow up with them and check on them after the interview, because not a lot, all of them, like Counselor Sacco said, it is competitive, so not all of them get to be in the committee, and, and really, but they're really good, I mean, they're excellent people, and so we just want to make sure that we follow up with them and that we keep them updated on the new, whatever new committees are out there or new, new spots are opening up.
Yeah, so I can speak to that process. So after the committee meeting within that week, typically within a day or two, I follow up with those who have been appointed or who have been recommended for appointment to let them know that they'll be going forward at the next council meeting, and then that gives an opportunity for the staff person to connect with those who are being recommended for appointment. For those who are not recommended for appointment, I typically get some feedback from the councilors on the committee sometimes, like, oh, they may be a good fit for here or there, and so I'll encourage them in those directions for committees that are even outside of a city committee. So we've had recommendations for different boards and stuff as well. But I kick back to Jackie. So Jackie Conan and I work together closely on the appointments for the committees, and I kick that back to her. She gets in typically gets directly in touch with the person, offers them other current openings, or gets them connected with our volunteer programs in general so that they stay here with the city. So Jackie will hold their applications if we know we have other appointments coming up, or if she thinks they're going to be a fit, and she keeps really great track of like who would be a good fit as those appointments come up. So we take your feedback and Jackie's connection with the people and keep them connected with the city after those appointments. So we don't let them just fly away, we, we like to hold on to them as closely as we can.
Thank you for explaining that, because I think it would be good for all of, the rest of the council to know that there is a follow-up process, that we don't leave people out there on their own without...
We don't let them run away, once you've showed interest.
We'll continue. To Counselor Sacco's point about preparing, and sometimes it's funny, we get the question, so what does this committee do again? It's like, oh my gosh. So I, I really fully support what, what Counselor Sacco's saying about that preparation of this is going to be a three-year term and, you know, even though they see it and, or read it quickly, but I think it's, it's that preparation is really important. Thank you.
Counselor Brooks.
I had two questions about the, the processes. One was with the Architectural Review Board, that council member isn't a voting member, correct?
No, they are. They serve as chair of the committee.
Yeah. So they are a voting member?
Yes.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, so, because I couldn't, I could, core areas too.
Core area and, yeah, so we get, it's kind of weird that there's two committees that people vote, yeah.
Okay, so, well, and I, it's interesting, it is kind of mishmashy, but I do remember when we went through the IDEA Committee about giving the community the opportunity to create these councils and their rules, and I know for the Arts Committee, it's something that they want, but if they decided they didn't want it, I would want them to have that decision. So I have curiosity around, like, if there was a desire, if there was enough of us to cover all the committees, and if there was a desire for that, that, I'm just wondering if it comes from the committee itself, if you posit that question to them rather than us deciding that for the committee? That's one thing that I'm curious about. And then the other question I had too was around the CCAA itself, if there is an alternate, if someone can't be there.
We don't have an alternate, and there's not one outlined in the council rules. We typically, we typically work together to find a meeting date that works.
Oh, I know, because I was on it, but I do also know that there's times where not everyone can come, and it might just be a way of having three people for a decision instead of two, because sometimes that, it's an even number, that's all.
Yeah.
Those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you for everybody that's serving on it. I think it's a privilege to serve on it. I was part of those question rewrites, and I think that that's something that the committee's certainly capable of doing on their own, and look forward to hearing what you guys come up with.
Counselor Gonzalez, you have anything? I just have a few things. We got a...
Remember what I was going to say, and then I had a couple more things. So if, if someone's not reappointed, and this is some feedback that we've received, have something be more sort of final, or a thank you of, you know, thank you for your service. We kind of talked about having a certificate, or maybe it's a thank you note, or something of, you know, a formality of appreciating them for their time that they were appointed if they're not reappointed when they go back up for reappointment. I agree with Counselor Brooks about having a counselor liaison. If a, if a committee is not in support of that, I would want them to be in support of that, to have a, have a counselor liaison. And then, both Counselor Pratt and Counselor Reyes brought up the sort of what's next. People always ask what, what's next. I wonder if we could get a script on that, because we kind of all say a variety of things. It would be nice to maybe have that at the end of the, of the interview questions, and maybe that's just after we wrap up the last question, that's sort of a script at the end that we could read.
Because we take turns rotate the questions.
Yeah.
Counselor here.
Thank you. Just one quick thing that I would think could be a potential improvement in the process is I see that under the basic legal requirements of a committee, Oregon Public or Oregon Government Ethics Law, I wonder if annually there could be... or Oregon Government Ethics Law, I wonder if annually there could be some online ethics class then, that, that all the people take if they are a public official? Um, just, I, I feel like that's pretty important. And, and I'd love to see that incorporated in the process. Thank you.
Yeah.
One more thing.
I'll talk as fast as I can. Oh, I'm just wondering if we could, I, I like Counselor Brooks' idea too, so is there a way, like, since it's just library and parks, could there be outreach to them to see if they, uh, what they thought of the idea of having a council liaison? Yeah.
Would it be an ex-official, or like, non-voting member?
I think ex-official, yeah. Just someone that could communicate back between.
One of my answers, we already got an answer on the two committees where the counselor does vote, so that's only the core area in Architecture Review, which is fine. Um, as far as the other committees, why there weren't any liaisons? Because in the past, city council was full up of assignments. And those were two committees that were tough to fill, so we decided no liaisons. That's basically why. Because people didn't want additional meetings back in the day. Um, my question revolves around the youth, that some committees, they get to vote and some they don't.
Right.
And the purpose of that, why? Because to get to me, to have a youth be actively involved and want to come to the committee, is they should have a vote. And not having a vote, why waste my time? I'm just gonna sit here and maybe, uh, propose a position that no one listens to me about? So I would just be wondering why some vote and some don't. I know the youth advocacy and the youth members are a recent thing. They started coming on board about, uh, I think in my second term, we started adding, like, the Library Committee, when we were starting recognizing the value of youth input. I don't know if there's a legal thing, Kevin, with having a youth member vote, is there? Because since they can vote on some committees and they can't vote on others.
Your Honor, I don't think there's an issue if a youth member is voting in an advisory capacity. I believe the commissions or committees you're speaking of are advisory only.
And I know we didn't talk about budget, which I don't remember why there was not a slide for it, but there is a youth member on budget, but by law, you have to be an elector to be on the budget committee, and so if you're under 18, you're not an elector, so you can't vote.
Yeah, because I, and if there's a, if there's a legal reason, why not? I could certainly say, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'd rather have them have more buy-in and more skin in the game. Go ahead.
Another quick question, as far as where these rules apply, like when we have ad hoc committees. So it seems like I'm worried about kind of a standardization for the ad hoc committees that happen. I mean, I've been on different things over the years, and so it's just one thing I'd like to see. If we're gonna review a process, that should be in there.
And my last one, I'll go to Council Gonzalez. None of us talked about the term limits. I'm against term limits for these committees, because some of these people become rock stars in their committee, and I hate to lose them. Uh, especially going back to my days on the TLAC, there's some people in there that know exactly how that library runs, they volunteer in that library, they know the operations in and out. Um, and I'd hate to lose that to somebody. Obviously, if someone flubs an interview, oh, well, but I don't want someone just to be termed out because they served three terms, especially if they're a rock star. So that's my two cents on that one. Council Gonzalez.
Yes, I recall what Counselor Sacco said, um, about when the term ends, to have a certificate or something, to, to have closure. Um, several months ago, I was approached by a couple of people who were on committees, who all of a sudden they were off the committees and didn't know that it had ended. Maybe they didn't receive the communication, or anything like that. So I think it's a good idea to, to congratulate them, thank them for their time, and your term has ended, if the terms are in existence. But I do remember a couple of people saying that they were just off the committee and not knowing it was over. So I was just reminded when you had said that. Thank you.
Anything else on this one? Council Brooks.
I was just, I'm confused about the Architectural Review Board Committee still, as far as having the council member be a voting member, because I understand that concern around if there was something that had to come to council for decision-making and then go back to it, that it was, uh, unusual for somebody to be double-dipping in voting. I know a lot of times, if there's somebody on the PAB that's gonna be reviewing for the county, they won't participate in the PAB vote. And, um, and I don't, I don't know that, how that, how we handle that. I don't think we should lose a, a council voice on that committee. I think it's a really important committee. I remember, um, Counselor, um, Grimes would bring us really valuable information from that committee, but I'm curious about that, the ramifications around voting.
You still have it in core area, too. You've got two committees.
But core, do we bounce stuff back to core area, though?
It could.
That doesn't get appealed to council, yeah. The only one I thought about is Architectural Review, just because some of that stuff's contentious with community, too. And I just don't want anybody to be in a situation where the optics don't look good for that counselor, for them doing extra work and all of a sudden being in a highlighted position because of the fact they're doing extra service. That's, those are my thoughts.
And thank you, Counselor Brooks. It, it's unusual. I'm not saying it's improper regarding the Architectural Review Board for a council, or just to vote and serve as the chairman of the board. I think it's, uh, more of an issue perception-wise for the, for the city council. Generally, cities and local government, they appoint, uh, uh, community members to, uh, terms on commissions and committees, and they operate independently. And the council will appoint a council liaison, who is a non-voting member and is not there to influence the workings or the voting or the decisions of those individual commissions or committees. Uh, that's not to say that it's improper, what the city's Tuolton's doing. It might be an issue for that individual counselor, who, if there was the decision, quasi-judicial decision appeal to the city council, would that counselor then have to recuse themselves because they cannot be impartial, or have a, a perception of bias, or something like that? So I think that's the main issue with that, in that board.
All right. Anything else? Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks.
All right, so next up, Megan will be discussing the results of our 2023 Tuolton Community Survey. Welcome, Megan.
All right. Hi, good evening. Uh, so, my name is Megan George, I'm the Deputy City Manager in Tuolton, for the record. Uh, every few years, we ask residents in Tuolton to complete a survey on the livability of Tuolton. 2023 marks the fifth time that we have done this survey through the National Community Survey. Previous surveys were completed in 2010, 2013, 2016, and 2020. In September of last year, select households started receiving correspondence, asking them to complete the survey. And then in October, the Open Participation Survey Link went live, so that everybody in the community could participate. In the following slides, I'll review more background on the survey instrument itself, as well as some of the key takeaways we found. All right. So the National Community Survey reports on the livability of Tuolton, meaning only residents of Tuolton were asked to participate and eligible to submit a survey. The survey includes standard questions about the 10 facets of livability, which are listed on the screen. And while the results, which you have attached to your packet, are sorted into these categories, the survey instrument and the questions were not necessarily. We also received feedback on general quality of life, governance, and two custom questions that we designed, which appeared at the end of the survey. So most of the stuff in the survey is specific to what the city does, but there were some questions that are outside of our jurisdictions, and where appropriate, we will share that information with them. Okay, so like I said, we conducted both a sampled survey and an open participation survey. And that was important because we wanted to have a statistically valid survey, so that's the sampled survey. And we also wanted everybody to have the chance to provide feedback. So the results are included, the full results, from the Open Participation Link are at the back of your packet as well. And the results primarily are predominantly, were largely the same between the two surveys, but there were some slight differences throughout. For the purposes of this slide and all subsequent slides, the results are only taken from the sampled survey. So to ensure that our results were representative of the Tuolton community, we established demographic targets, which were based off of the 2020 census and the 2022 American Community Survey. So results were then weighted for age, again, 18-plus, race, Hispanic origin, housing type, housing tenure, and area. We opted to include a geographic requirement to ensure that results were spread throughout the entire city, as opposed to clustered in one or two neighborhoods. And just for an example of how that works, in our survey, only 7% of respondents identified as Hispanic or Latino, but we know, because of the 2020 census, that our population is much closer to 19%. So responses from individuals identifying as Hispanic or Latino were weighted more heavily, so that it came across as closer to 19% in the true results. Okay. See if I can get my pointer. Oh, it's gonna work. Excellent. So, we have here, um, uh, survey, respondents were asked to also respond on the overall quality and the importance of each of the 10 facets of livability. And this graph reflects the combined results of both of those questions. The X-axis, which is down here, is for importance, and then the Y-axis is for quality. So you can see that, um, facets that are most important to Tuolton residents should appear on the right-hand side of the screen, in the upper percentile. Things that are most of high quality will be towards the top of the graph, appear. And they added in a median line right here, which just means the middle of the results, so that's what the dotted X represents in the middle of those results. So to point out just a few of these, the most important, most important facet of livability for residents of Tuolton was safety, right here, very top of the chart. We had 90% of respondents saying it is essential or very important. Helpfully, in Tuolton, this facet of livability also scored the highest in terms of quality, with 87% saying that their overall feelings of safety are excellent or good. That's kind of what we want. If it's really high up in importance, it's also high up in quality. To offer a comparison, I'll point out mobility, which is down here. So mobility, um, 80% of Tuolton residents say it is essential or very important, but only 58% rate the overall transportation system as excellent or good. So it's towards the middle line, but on the further end of importance, and of course, the quality is a bit lower, which I'm sure surprises none of you. All right. Next slide. So the report of results, which is attached in your packet, has just an abundance of information, and you can spend hours going through it. Um, we pulled out a few key takeaways today. There's just seven, although I did split them up over a few slides in some cases, so it feels a bit longer than seven. Um, many of the takeaways are quite similar to in years previous. When I was here in 2020, reporting on our results then, I talked about quality of life, I talked about trust in government, I talked about the safety in our community, economy, and traffic. All right, jumping into it. So the quality of life in Tuolton is quite high. Residents gave high marks to Tuolton as a place to live, their neighborhood as a place to live, and as a place to raise children. Almost nine in 10 said they would recommend living in Tuolton, and that the overall quality of life is excellent or good. These results are largely similar to in years previous, demonstrating that a high quality of life has been maintained for many people, at least over the 13 years that we have survey results. Okay. Trust in Tuolton government is also quite high. So governance is not one of the 10 facets of livability, but I think among friends, we can all say that government does have an impact on livability in communities. Uh, we scored highly in many aspects of governance, particularly when compared to the benchmarks, so that includes both the national benchmark and the custom benchmark for western cities with populations of 75,000 or less. For example, I'll point you towards this one right here, 78% rated Tuolton's government performance as excellent or good at being honest. Just looking at the number, like, that sounds pretty strong, but when we compare it to the national benchmark, we were in the 87th percentile, scoring 38th out of 305 cities surveyed. And then narrowing it down just to the western cities, we were in the 91st percentile, scoring third out of the 50 cities surveyed. Moving over now to this one, 81% rate Tuolton government as excellent or good at treating residents fairly. Here, we did even better. For the national benchmark, we were in the 95th percentile, scoring 16th out of the 311 cities surveyed. And for western cities, we were in the 100th percentile, scoring first out of the 51 cities surveyed. Across all of the governance ratings up here and in the larger packet, we scored either similar or higher than the national benchmark. Uh, so we did not receive scores for everything that the city does, but we did receive scores for some of our services. Um, you can see on the screen, we've got high ratings for customer service, public information services, police, Parks and Recreation, and our leader on this scoreboard, at least, the library, with 91%. Uh, there were a few other scores that were significantly lower. Um, for example, 47% rated land use planning and zoning as excellent or good, and 59% rated code enforcement as excellent or good. Both of these services are regulatory and not particularly popular when, um, up against the library or Parks and Rec. Uh, for the, for those two scores in particular, they're, they're lower certainly than these, but they are comparable to the national benchmark. And in particular, for code enforcement, we scored 59%, um, but that puts us in the 83rd percentile, placing 10th out of 55 cities for western cities. So, just a point of comparison. They value city services, and of course, our utilities are award-winning. So if you recall, one of the opening slides, I had that quality importance matrix. So for utilities, 84% said that the quality of utility infrastructure is essential or very important to focus on for the next two years. And we scored exceptionally high. All four of the measures on the screen scored at least 10 percentage points higher than the national average. Um, and we scored highly in 2020 as well, which is why we were the recipient of the 2021 Voice of the People Award for Excellence in Transformation in Utilities. Um, like I said, we've scored highly over the years in our utilities, but we've also demonstrated progress. For example, just looking at the stormwater management percentage, this year we rated 90%. In 2010, 74% said we were excellent or good, which moved up to 79% in 2013, 81% in 2016, 87% in 2020, and 90% in 2023. I did not include these on the slide, but we also received high marks for some of our franchised utility services, including power, garbage, recycling, and yard waste. All right. Um, some of the highest scores that we received came from feelings of safety in Tuolton. Over nine in 10 residents say they feel safe in their neighborhood during the day, and in downtown commercial areas during the day. We also received favorable scores for many of our inclusivity ratings. Noticeably, point this one out down here, um, we received a nearly 10 percentage point jump for openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds since the last time we completed the National Community Survey in 2020. So it's at 71% right now, in 2020 was at 61%. Um, I did not include metrics related to emergency preparedness on the screen, although those were also high, again, demonstrating the value of community emergency response team in Tuolton and other emergency preparedness programming. Okay. Switching gears a little bit, I used the orange color, so it's a bit more serious, I don't know. One of the areas that residents expressed concern is growth. Um, scores for growth, whether residential or commercial, were low. So you can see we were in the mid-40s to upper 40s for well-planned residential growth, well-planned commercial growth, and the overall quality of new development. These scores were similar to the national average, and they were even a bit higher than the average for western cities, but they did indicate a drop from scores that we received in 2020. So the perception of residential growth was a 12% decrease, while the perception of commercial growth was a 7% decrease. We only have those two years for scores, because these questions were included in previous surveys, so it's hard to tell what's related to the pandemic and recovery from the pandemic, and what's a larger indication. We do have scores, though, for the overall quality of new development. Um, so we found that scores held steady around 70% between 2010 and 2016, but then they began to decline to 58% in 2020, and now 47% in 2023. Going back again to that quality importance matrix at the beginning, 77% said that the overall design or layout of residential and commercial areas was essential or very important to focus on in the next two years, which was behind scores of importance for safety, natural environment, economy, Parks and Recreation, utilities, and mobility. So their concern about growth, uh, and their perception of economic development. So while 77% rate the overall economic health of Tuolton as a whole as excellent or good, there were some notable decreases from scores we received last time. So the following four on the screen, I'll list it out. So the following four on the screen, I'll list it out. The first one was a ten percentage point drop. The next one was an eleven percent point drop. The third one was a fourteen percent drop. And then this last one was an eight percent drop. So that's just the indication of where we were in 2020 versus where we were in 2023. So zooming out to see if we could see a larger trend over time that did level some things out. For example, when we looked at the overall quality of business and service establishments in all of the years, including 2010, 2013, 2016, we hovered around sixty-seven percent to seventy-five percent. It appears as if in 2020, we had a one-time high of eighty-three percent. So that eleven percent drop that I indicated is a little bit misleading. However, when we look at this last one, the vibrancy of downtown commercial area, it looks like there is a downward trend, beginning with a score of fifty percent in 2016, going to forty-four percent in 2020, and now thirty-six percent in 2023. And again, I'll reiterate, this, the, the survey asks people how they feel or their perception of these things. It is not necessarily a reflection of reality in every instance, but it is certainly how they're feeling and their perception. So for this next one, generally, residents have a fairly negative perception of how the economy will impact their family income in the next six months. We only had twenty-one percent feeling it would be very or somewhat positive, and only thirty-six percent rating the cost of living in Tuolton as excellent or good. Other measures for affordability of resources saw increased signs of strain. The other three listed on the screen all indicated decreases of nineteen percent, respectively, seventeen percent, and nine percent compared to the scores in 2020. And that is especially true in asking people how they feel about housing in Tuolton. So on the screen, I've got two results from the survey. On the left, we found twenty-five percent saying that the availability of affordable quality housing was excellent or good. You can see, looking at the trend, beginning in 2010, we had fifty percent saying it was excellent or good, and over time, that has decreased down to its current rate of twenty-five percent. The second graph shows that fifty percent rated the variety of housing options as excellent or good. Again, in 2010, that rating was at sixty-nine percent, and it steadily decreased to fifty percent that we have in 2023. Okay. Getting towards the end. So traffic remains a concern, but it seems as if improvements to the transportation system are helping. Only twenty-seven percent rate traffic flow on major streets as excellent or good in Tuolton, which is lower than both the national benchmark and the western cities benchmark. Despite this, the investments in the transportation system over the last few years seem to be helping with the perception of safety and alternative forms of mobility. So you can see ratings up there for public parking, walking and biking, quality of street repair, quality of street lighting, quality of sidewalk maintenance, all things that were tackled as part of the Tuolton Moving Bond Program, as well as other public works and infrastructure projects. Further, while traffic flow was low compared to the benchmark, all of the other ratings listed scored higher than both the national benchmark and benchmark for western cities surveyed. And further, Tuolton was uniquely a very high percentage of people that chose alternative modes of transportation as a way to get around in the last twelve months, including public transit, carpooling, and walking and biking. All right. So the next two slides include the results from the custom questions that we asked this year. So we've used this to ask about a variety of different issues over the years, including funding measures for transportation. In 2020, we asked about funding for parks. For the last three surveys, we've asked this question, which asks about how people find information out about the city. So you can see, there's a list of different ways that they might find information, and we asked them to say whether they used it as a major source of information, a minor source of information, or not a source. So to read this graph, the light blue indicates that it's a major source. The dark blue indicates it's a minor source, and the orange indicates it's not a source. So by and large, the results have shifted a little bit, but not too much over the years. Still, the most important, or the places where people find the most information are the city's website, followed by the local media outlets, Tuolton Today, and word of mouth. All right. So the last question we asked is residents' opinions for expanding options for food carts in Tuolton. So again, the only people eligible to complete the survey were residents. As you will recall, last year at the council advance, we talked a little bit about food carts, and so we decided to pop this question on the survey to see how folks would feel about changing the code. So there were four separate questions. None of these scenarios are currently allowed by code. In those scenarios, a food cart would be allowed on a temporary basis downtown. A food cart would be allowed on a permanent basis downtown. A food cart pod would be allowed in the downtown area, and then a food cart pod would be allowed in the commercial industrial area outside of downtown. And again, looking at this graph, the dark blue is strongly support. The light blue is somewhat support. The green is somewhat opposed, and the orange is strongly opposed. So you can see, by and large, residents strongly support expanding options for food carts across all four of those different categories. That brings me to the end. I will turn it back over to you, Mayor, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Questions for Megan. Council Brooks.
Thank you for the report. It's always interesting to hear about how we're doing in comparison. I guess I had two questions. The first one was with the award that we received. Who gives out that award?
So it's Polco. So it's the National Research Center at Polco, I think is how they're officially describing themselves now. So they put together a series of awards that are all based on survey responses. So we scored really well for utilities, which is why we received that award. But they have it in different categories according to the facets of livability. I think it was presented at the International City County Management Association Conference in 2021.
Well, congratulations. And congratulations. We see Rachel back there, too. My other question is with the, with the, the revitalization of downtown and how that overlaps with, with parks and things like that. I guess, is there, is there one part of the survey that was the biggest change in...
For scores?
Yeah.
Between 2020 and 2023?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the strongest declines came from those affordability ratings.
Okay.
Followed by the growth ratings. I think that the growth ratings tracked some national trends as well, because I don't recall in 2020 that we were necessarily egregiously high for those things. So I think nationally, there's been a decline in some of those ratings anyways.
Okay. Yeah, well, values have gone up in inflation, but it seems, seems like we're capping some of that off, so hopefully that will change, too, as things change. But I appreciate the, I appreciate the work. I'm looking forward to looking at a little bit more, too. Thanks.
Yeah. The other thing I'll add on some of those ratings, the, all of the surveys that we were compared against happened in the last five years, including our survey results in 2020, which all occurred during the pandemic. And so it's very possible that some of that impacted. I know I pointed out for one of those on business and service establishments, that one-time high in 2020. I suspect that that influenced quite a few of our results related to cost of living and affordability and development.
Councilor Gonzalez, you had your mic on.
Yes, yes. Regarding the residents' concerns, do you think traffic played a role in this? That's always seems to be the one that hits us. So the residents' concerns about growth, how did we rate those in prior surveys? I, I don't remember what you said.
Yeah. So for growth, the ratings, we had, I think, four listed on the slide. Two of the ratings, the one specific to commercial and the one specific to residential, we were only asking those questions in 2020 and 2023. So we don't have a really nice trend line to be able to show how residents' opinions have changed over time. For the overall quality of new development, we do have those ratings since 2010, and that's where we are seeing a decline for overall development. It's quite possible that traffic, that people are linking traffic to development. That's certainly feedback that we've heard in recent decisions that have come through. Traffic is also one of those where we've seen it improve slightly, but not significantly.
Yeah. The other item that I saw, the quality, the importance, that matrix that you showed us on, that they showed education at seventy percent. Was there any more information around education?
Yeah, education was included in one of the categories for livability, and there was a decline in K-12 education. There was a specific question about K-12. I don't remember the exact percentage off my, off the top of my head, but there was a specific question about K through twelve education, as well as, I believe, college-level education in the community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councilor Rez.
Thank you, Megan. Very interesting. My question is more on the, were there any comments on, when sometimes they, they ask, is there any comments, why you answer this way? Did you get any comments on those, especially the, the concerns one, like anyone saying anything?
There was not an opportunity for survey respondents to provide additional information on the survey itself. The model that Polco uses is they start with this upfront survey. It's standardized across all of the communities that participate. And then their model is they want you to then follow up with secondary and tertiary surveys, digging into some of those questions to get a little bit nuanced picture of what's going on, which is something that we could consider doing if there were specific questions that came up as a result of these.
Right. Well, the concern, one of the concerns was that it was, I think it was part of the, geez, on the negative, it was something about not a concern on the, of, not the affordable, like it's development or expanding or growth. I'm wondering if they mean because we don't have enough, or, I mean, what was the concern? Is it too much or not enough? So I, I'm wondering, what was the positive or negative of that concern? So that's why I asked that question.
Sure.
So was there, I guess my comment's like, when they say it was a concern that they, we don't have enough development, or is the excellent of it, it's not, I mean, I'm wondering if you have any, had any of those.
We didn't get any additional information, no. So it's, it's hard to know why people answered in the way that they did. I believe those questions were asking about the quality of it. So not specific to the amount or the type, but just the quality of development that's occurring in those three categories, the commercial, residential, and then overall.
And on the, my last question is regarding the expansion of food carts, or some, some food carts in the core area. It looks like people, based on this survey, may not want a permanent, I mean, that's kind of like the lowest support on that. And I'm wondering, do we have any data from before, like from 2015 or 2016 about what people thought of? Because I know that came up once upon a time about food carts in the core area.
I don't know that we have any survey results on related questions. Sherilyn, do you recall?
Not survey results. There were certain...
No survey results, but there were certainly comments from community members about the desire, but...
Yeah. Looking at that specific one, Councilor, allowing a food cart on a permanent basis, it looks like we had just over fifty percent strongly support and just over twenty percent on top of that somewhat supporting. So still around seventy percent support.
Okay, so, so people might have changed, because I know this conversation came, the talk about food carts have been around for a little while, so it looks like people are interested in hearing more and more of what we're thinking about in that core area.
Yeah. At least residents are.
Residents, right.
Adult residents.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
President Pratt.
This survey is really, I think it's really a great use because we, there's a lot of it that isn't surprising, and then there are some things that are. And one thing that stuck out to me, that says seventy-seven percent of people walked their bike instead of driving, which is good for our community, you know, that they're doing that. And then I just want to thank you for throwing that food cart question in, not because of the question, but because we have that interest, and this is a great, efficient way to find a lot of responses on that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments?
I am curious, as far as communications from the city, if there's change on social media, like where the biggest change is, and if there's trending changes around communications.
Yeah, there wasn't a ton of change in the responses on that question. It was a few percentage points difference here up and down. I, I don't recall specifically what the changes were. I believe there was a slight decrease in social media, actually.
Okay.
But it, it certainly has shot up between 2010 and 2023. The website, I believe, has always been the predominant form of information, though.
Thank you.
Anything else? It's okay. All right, thanks, Megan.
All right, thank you.
Megan, do you want to talk about the communication?
Yeah.
Like what next steps for this information?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are going to put together kind of a package of information that we'll disseminate in a variety of avenues. So some of the things we plan to do are to put together a two-sheeter to consolidate this information into something that's a bit more palatable for most people, which we'll post on our website, have as a handout available while we're tabling at various events, post at the library and some of our other city facilities. We'll update the webpage with the full report so that folks who want to get into the weeds have the opportunity to do so. We're thinking about doing a display case at the library with some fun facts. We'll follow up on social media. We'll post a news release so that if somebody wanted to rave about us, they could. But planning to get it out in a variety of different ways, as well as having talking points available for staff so they can answer questions. Thank you.
Council Brooks.
And then, will there also be information for the advance?
Sure, yeah. We can have packets or whatever printouts we need by that point. Certainly, we'll have the two-sheeter, I think, for the advance.
Okay.
I think, yeah, right?
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now.
Okay.
Double check now? Run while you can. All right. That brings us to roundtable and agenda review. Have Council Reyes is up for the pledge of allegiance tonight. All right. And then we have six items on consent. Any questions or concerns with any of the six items? All right, doesn't look like it. We don't have any proclamations. With that, I'll go ahead and start the council roundtable. I'll just go ahead and start with Council Hillier. See, I'm shifting it a little bit.
Thank you, I know. Happy New Year.
Krista Duck, she's going to go right away.
We're twins. That's what you're thinking, I see. The only meeting that I've had the opportunity to attend is the Architectural Review Board meeting, which was on December the thirteenth, and thanks to the city manager for sharing that out to the fellow councilors. And I apologize, I should be doing that, so thank you. I didn't think to do that, so I will do that in the future. So we had a robust discussion. We had a couple new members of our committee, so thank you to the CCAA for recommending such great folks, and to our returning people, there's an excellent group of engineers and such. And also, thank you to our, of council for the city to help make sure that ran smoothly that evening. It was. And you can just see that we approved the project on 124th Avenue Industrial Development Area. And I think it's going to look amazing based on the input of the groups. It's really an amazing group to be part of, and, and I'm very thankful to be on that committee. So if you have any questions, I'd refer you to Steve Copper.
Council Reyes.
No official council meetings or committee meetings, but I just want to thank everyone out there for your support and everything that you do for the city. And also, don't forget to, if you work or own property, or if you manage a business in the core area, which is the downtown area, join the committee, and we need you. We need your voice. Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So, thank you. I did have a lot of meetings that I kind of attended. I didn't write a summary, but I'll highlight the one that was, a couple of good ones, was met with Rob over at the Stafford-Hamlet area to discuss that. That was a very interesting meeting as well. Also, met with Metro Councilor Jerry Rosenthal. We discussed a lot of different things that Metro is interested in. One specifically is the Climate Action Plan, and they're interested in what Metro can do. They know that they don't have the people to manage all of this process, but when I spoke to our Climate Action Plan for Tuolton, some of the things that we're thinking of pursuing, he was in support in trying to figure out how to do it. How can we do it? So that was, I did a follow-up email with him, summarizing our meeting. So I'm hoping that he will come back and say, this is kind of the process, but it's hard to do, maybe there's a way for us to go for. But I'm going to unpack that and see what he does, okay? I was very excited about his encouragement in the Climate Action Plan. I think that's probably the more memorable one to discuss, so that's all I have for now.
All right. Council Brooks.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. The 14th of December, or no, not the, was it the? I think I went, do we meet after the 14th? No, okay, so it was the 14th. It seems like so far away. We met with the PAB and we heard two applicants for, I think it was the home. And we, and then over the break, I also, we did the ratings. We will be sharing the results this Thursday. So it's in my packet, but I can't release the results till Thursday. But if anybody wants to tune in, you can always join virtually. And then I'll report next time. And then we will be starting another round of presentations. We'll be doing live presentations the week after. So for the Community Development Block Grants. And so that should be exciting. And then the Arts Committee, we met as well right before Christmas. So thanks again to all the volunteers in our community. They're so dedicated. And mostly we've been talking about, I mean, we do a little year review. And they've accomplished a lot of things. But mostly we've been talking about the interview process, which my work on the, the Committee for Council of Committee, I can't remember the name of it either. Yes, CCAA. That helped me a lot, too, with helping the discussion around having uniform conversations around that and some of the things that might not intuitively come to artists' mind about how sort of bureaucratic and fair we have to be in government organizations. But it's going to be, it's really well organized. Julie's done a great job and we are excited to meet the artists that are going to be offering the proposals for the Veterans Plaza. Thank you and hope everybody had a great break.
Council Sacco.
Thank you and Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everybody had a great holiday season. On December 14th, I attended the Legislative Committee Public Hearing on Tolling in Wilsonville and testified to the, the Subcommittee about tolling. And I really focused on the inequities of the, of the tolling as it stands today, as what has been discussed, I guess, as of today. And I just wanted to say thank you to our own Mike McCarthy, who testified and just did a stellar job, and, and others who testified as well, the mayor and, and Councilor President Pratt. And that's it.
Council President Pratt.
Yeah, Happy New Year. And I did testify this special Subcommittee and, boy, I practiced and two minutes is really short. So it's like halfway through, I'm like, oh, man, I've got 40 seconds. And I focused more on the, I think like the transportation, that there's no route, there's no, you know, how can you? There's no routes in the diversion. And it was great, the mayor was there. And, and again, I'd say Mike McCarthy, he, he was amazing. He really hit it out of the park with his comments. Then I went to the C4 meeting last week and that's what I have here. I just wanted to quickly go over, I know it's a lot of numbers, but Mayor Bielostowski, did I do it right? He, through public records request, found some information which is attached here on the tolling and the administration fees, which is fairly shocking. And so if you look on the first page, just on column D, I'll have you focus. So what, what that shows is there are now four different tolling, potential ways of tolling by the Albernathy Bridge that is supposed to be decided later this month. And of all those four scenarios, what column E shows you is that after, that with the gross revenues of between $6, just under $7 to just over $7 in all these scenarios, they have to bring in that much. And then after they pay the debt service and admin fees, there will be $1, $1 left for actually building the bridge and the road surrounding it. It's kind of amazing. And then the other pages just lay out the admin fees in detail. But the two columns I highlighted, one is, they're the biggest percentages. One is 11.03% and that is for state consultant and operations costs. Nobody's actually given an answer on what that means. But it seems a little shocking when, if you go to the other column I highlighted, they're going to also pay almost 20% to accompany, to administrate this, the tolling program. So this state consultant's and operations fees in addition to paying an outside vendor. And there are also no vendors in the state of Oregon that do this service. So we will be paying an out-of-state company to do this.
Probably out of, out of country.
Maybe out of country, yeah. So it's, this is, this is amazing information.
Sure. So you're saying that the total administration fees, 42% plus percent? And then the 20% is together? So if you add those together, that's?
Well, it's, the, the total admin fees to get from, you know, the revenue they think they're going to get to the, the normal admin fees is that 42.1%. In addition, there's these two columns of like repairs and maintenance and stuff that is of that they collected is, is another, it's 12% of the total collected? Or over 21% of the net revenue? I mean, it's, it's, it's huge.
The way Mayor Rory put it out. So just imagine the tolls a dollar each way on the, on the, on the bridge. You're going to have to go over the bridge eight times for $1 to go across to be allocated to paying back the bond.
Yeah, that's what this.
The actual deferring, I mean, it's, you know, the interest, all that kind of stuff. Only one buck of every eight is going to go towards the actual bridge.
I, yeah, and my, my, my thing, I've always been trying to figure out, because I feel like I've gotten a lot of numbers. None of them have been good numbers. Administration costs. So I was just curious if it was 42 or 42 plus 20%, 62%? Because I've heard estimates all the way up to 70% administration costs, which to me, this is a very outdated way to raise money.
Well, and, and I looked up some, it's, oh, gosh, the Commerce Resource Center. They, they do the background inform, or research for Congress, United States Congress. And I read it, yeah, I read a tolling report they had and they, they stated how it's like the most, one of the most inefficient ways to collect revenue. And even their numbers, though, were not like this. So it's, it's, it's rather shocking. So I wanted to share it with everyone, so you're informed.
Thank you very much.
And that's it.
We'll go with what Council Pratt, President Pratt was just saying. They had the presentation on Saturday. Clackamas County was up to bat. And I know Representative Hartman spoke, Representative Jewels. I think Senator Meeks spoke. Obviously Paul Savis, Rory. And they really went, gave a lot of information to the Legislative Committee. I don't know if it's making any difference. The one person that seems to be making the differences is Kevin Mannix, but that's about it. He's obviously anti-toll. He's already said it and same with Senator Meeks. He's endorsing IP4. But the rest of them are saying nothing. Obviously Representative Hartman's against it, as is Representative Walters, so that, that's no surprise. The other thing I had, I, I know I did send it out late. My other meeting, besides testifying on the 14th, was Representative Salinas's office gave a presentation on the community project fundings, otherwise known as earmarks, giving us a heads up that the requests might go out in February for projects. She's got four priorities in your packet, of which I think, you know, we're well suited to hit one or two of these and those are, I've been flipping back and forth. Affordable housing, law enforcement and public safety. So I'm thinking getting funding for the mental health team. Food security and community services, such as community centers, economic development, childcare. Those are four things she's really interested in. She'd love to see multi-jurisdictional projects, so state, city, county projects. They usually have to be about a, a max of about a million dollars at her level, but the senators have more. So we could work on both levels with the Congresswoman and our senators to get a package together if we see something. It has to be shovel-ready or ready to implement within a year. So that's pretty quick. What's that? Where? There's no capital improvement in her priorities. Yeah, yeah. She also said that matching monies also would be very helpful if we have some. And the big thing that's going to be, drive people insane and cross your eyes is for any grant you're looking at, you have to look at what Subcommittee of Congress approves that money and go to their website and the appropriations website, because each committee has different rules and a different process for applying for this money. So, but the things that popped out in my mind right away, of course, is chief, like I was saying, with the mental health response team. I know the Twalton Food Pantry is looking to improve their space. So that would be a food security thing. Any other things you can think of? We've got time. Congress has to approve the budget before these earmarks will go out. And you heard how this is still dragging out, but we've got to be ready. She said basically it might come out and you have four days to respond. That's why she held this meeting, so we'd all be ready and have, do our homework on what things we want to look at and go through all the hoops to see if it's even possible. But I just want to let you guys, it's a short slide deck, take a look at it. I popped on a couple of these appropriations committees. My eyes were going bling. Some make it easy, some make it really hard to get this money. Yeah, and then I've got to mention both Senator Wagon, Senator Wagon, Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley have reached out also to me about earmarks, but they have $5 million. And they have unlimited projects where Salinas has 15 or it's smaller. So we got to work the room if you, if, see what we're going to, you know, swing for the fences and see what sticks. Combination of my things here. All right, Council Brooks.
I just also thought of the one need a poll center, anything we might need for that.
Yeah, that's one of the categories.
And then whatever they're doing over at the SEPA Development for their community center.
Family Promise as Elise walks in.
Yeah, and from what I, they have an after-school program.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's quite a few, especially with a million-dollar max. Health appropriations are pretty limited, but those are the quick and easy ones that can be done in a year. Whereas getting the fire suppression system into Bridge to Home might be more than a year, but it's like a million-dollar project, which we'll hear about, I bet, from Elise as she walks in. But just wanted you guys to be aware of it, because it's got something, all of a sudden, we're going to have to jump. And I know city staff is buried at this point. So if we've got ideas, maybe at the after-hours or something or before the advance, some ideas or things you think the community could use and we could start working on.
We'll put our heads together as well and start to come up with potentially a list. I, I will say that once we have a lobbyist or like the grant writer type, that will, that will be helpful to advocate for those things because they are much more familiar with the subcommittees and, and how that work, that process works. And we don't really have anybody on staff that, that, you know, is, is, is in that loop, but.
But they won't be, the lobbyists won't be on board by February. No, yeah. All right, that's all I have. Anything else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the work session. We have about five minutes for a break. We'll kick back in with our regular council meeting at 7 o'clock.